Capitol City.
How are you people in your roles?
You have a Capitol sin, man.
Huh?
Be professional.
Be professional? This is Bojor City.
Capitol City.
Call to order. Welcome to Bojor City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday. Yeah. February thirteenth. It is now three oh two. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Ben Smagio. Please silence your cell phones.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you for all the blessings that you've given us, Lord. I pray that you will be with us in these council chambers today as we conduct the business of the citizens of Bojor City, Lord, and we continue to lift up Mr. Jacobs, Lord, and pray that you will be with him and his family. Lord, we pray that as we depart here today, you'll be with each and every one of us in your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please follow me saying the pledge.
Laying allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Ferry?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana Open Meeting Laws and the adopted Bojor City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order in decorum at meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on a particular that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal remarks or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the President per tone, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked by councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, council, there are no guests today. We're going to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Council, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting and dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance authori-
Did Mr. Montgomery get it pop up? Did yours pop up, Mr. Montgomery?
Yeah. It shows I voted for it. I'm the only one that's on there, don't mind. There they are.
There it goes.
Motion carries.
Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard McElroy and Vestal LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the firemen's pension and relief fund and the policeman pension and relief fund.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute an agreement between the City of Bojor and SSA Consultants to conduct a compensation plan study.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I think we have a representative here from SSA. Get him to come forward.
Good afternoon, council members.
Good afternoon. Would you give us your name?
Absolutely. My name is Cody Soshe. I will be the primary project manager for SSA Consultants. I've been a consultant with SSA for ten and a half years now.
Thank you so much. Mr. President, if you don't mind, we are appreciative of your being here, and we thought it would be good for the council members to hear just a brief of what scope of work you will perform for the city. And we know that you've done work for the parish and other municipalities as well. So if you'd just give us a brief, that would be appreciative.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have completed in the past six years over thirty compensation studies for both public and private entities across the state of Louisiana. Most recently, in August of twenty twenty-three, we completed a compensation study for Bojor Parish Police Jury. We also completed a compensation study for De Soto Parish Police Jury in November of twenty twenty-three. For the City of Bojor, we will be doing a complete compensation study, which is a review of every position within the city, and we will provide market valuations for each individual position. As a part of that process, we are undergoing a job analysis questionnaire, which will be distributed to all the employees of the city to make sure we are getting accurate and up-to-date information. Our total timeline for the project is about four to five months from start, which we are already underway, at least with the distribution of the data and information that we need to get rolling. So hopefully by the end of May, early June, we should have everything wrapped up and finalized and ready to go. So.
Now, in doing the parish-
Yes, sir.
That information that you gathered, does it transition into the municipality of Bojor in any way?
It depends. As far as the individual market valuations for positions, it does not on a one-to-one basis because every organization has different requirements for their jobs. So even though one title might be the same in one organization as it is the other, there might be different requirements or duties for that job. So we individually review each one for each organization we work for. We have provided the administration with a copy of the report that we did for the Bojor Parish Police Jury so they can have for their records and review.
Okay, great. The Soto Parish, was that the city or parish?
It's the police jury.
Police jury there too? Okay, all right, great. Council members, do you have any thing you would like to ask the consultant?
My biggest question was the timeline, but he's already addressed that, so I'm good.
Yeah, and we understand that you had to get childcare today to make this meeting. We appreciate that.
Yeah, where I'm from, Mardi Gras, they close all the schools and so I got a little daughter, but it's fine. We're good.
Thank you so much. Okay.
We need to address that thing.
Oh, for his address.
I'm sorry, name and the address.
Oh, my address of my organization or personal address?
Organization.
Organization. Nine three three one Blue Bonnet Boulevard, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven oh eight one oh.
Okay. All right, thank you. Have a safe journey home.
Oh, absolutely, and thank you. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Doherty. Welcome.
We're waiting on a couple votes. There we go.
Did you do comments for the audience?
Yes.
For what?
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing this sum of six hundred fifty thousand dollars from the two thousand and twenty-four M.E.S. capital in contingency budget for the purchase of a new pumper fire truck for the Bojor City Fire Department.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing positions to be filled in the Bojor City Maintenance Division of the Public Utilities Department as a result of retirement and promotions to increase the salaries for all maintenance division employees using the salary surplus available for staffing adjustments in amended two thousand and twenty-four water and sewer operating budgets.
So move.
Final reading?
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, new business?
Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bojor City and the Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty-three state and federal grants fund in Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund budgets in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act. First reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience?
Tamara Crane, seven oh six Bearcat Drive, Bojor City, seven eleven eleven. In this, it does seem to read that there is a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus that is being transferred out of the Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund. Am I reading that right? Oh.
That's to pay back a loan from the general fund that was given to make sure the fund balance was above the required fund balance per ordinance?
Thank you. I was just wanting to know where it's being transferred to.
General fund. Any additional questions?
So that's the money last year, Angela, that we transferred over. Now we're just transferring-
Just transferring back.
Just transferring back.
So it's just an internal transfer.
That was the question that I had on it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, council? We got Angela up here. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to adopt the five-year capital project plans. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience?
David Crockett, six five three Domain Drive, Bojor City, Louisiana. I hope Ms. Williams or somebody or the mayor can explain to the public how much of this five-year plan is going to be, is paid for or that the city has money for and how much you're going to have to borrow, which brings me to my favorite subject, which is Bojor City's debt. I've got, I'm gonna list them real quick. This is how much other cities have debt per capita. Lake Charles, seven ninety-eight. This is in two thousand and twenty-one funds, CAFRs. Homa, thousand thirty-five. New Orleans, thousand twelve hundred and sixty-nine, or twelve hundred and sixty-nine. Kenner, thirteen oh nine. Lafayette, three thousand sixteen. Monroe, three thousand one hundred and seventy. Alexandria, three thousand five hundred and eighty-three. Baton Rouge, four thousand six hundred, four thousand three hundred and sixty-three. Shreveport, five thousand three hundred and fifty-two. And this is two thousand and twenty-one funds. Bojor City was about seven thousand three hundred dollars debt per person. So the point being, this is a hundred and eighty-one million new spending on things other than what's funded for this year's program that you've already taken out of other funds. And Bojor City doesn't seem to have too much more discretionary money in funds that are not restricted. So I guess it would be nice for the public to hear that how much, how this is going to be paid for and how much new borrowing. I know Bojor City did not borrow the seventy-five million dollars that was planned a couple, or a year and a half ago when you approved it because of interest rates and stuff like that. But I believe that debt is an issue in Bojor City. That's why you're having a hard time, and you may have a big hard time paying for the salary study to get salaries to the level that you need to. So I think Bojor City public needs to know where the money's gonna come from for things like this. And I would want to make one other comment about the five-year plan. Does it include any money in that budget for the council on aging? I know she's trying to get a couple of million dollars in grant money, but I think it seems that you're about five to even more, seven or eight million short on that. And I think I heard a beep there, so I'm probably out of time. But I'll update these figures and write about it in local press, but I think the current debt in Bojor City is around four hundred million dollars. And borrowing another, you know, whatever it's gonna take, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, I don't know how much it's gonna take, that's gonna drive Bojor's debt way up. Thank you.
Tamara Crane, seven oh six Bearcat, seven eleven eleven, Bojor City. In this five-year plan under engineering, we have twenty-five million allocated to a multi-venue sports indoor. What exactly is that?
This is a project that we applied for, for capital outlay dollars, as are many of the projects. There are various funding sources. Not all have been secured, but these are projects that we have taken those steps toward. But it would be an indoor, multi-use sports complex.
And where's the location for that?
None of that has been finalized.
Any of this capital outlay securing done via legislative NGO request?
We don't do it through NGO because we are governmental entity.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? Oh, we got Amanda up here. All right, any additional comments from the audience?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I do have, I've got numerous questions on, especially the parks and recreation capital improvement projects, but I will get a meeting with Ms. Nottingham and go over this. So hopefully I can have some light on this. Because a lot of this, I mean, I'm just gonna be blunt with it. I mean, a lot of it, to me, is wasteful spending on what we've got laid out here. I mean, just one of them is the North Bojor Tennis Center, two hundred and five thousand dollars over the next five years. I mean, we haven't seen a dime in profit or revenue coming in off of that, and here we are spending another two hundred and five thousand dollars on this. But I will get with Ms. Nottingham so we can maybe, she shed some light on this for me.
Just to clarify, we have not allocated funds to all of these projects, that a lot of these are just plans. And I would say some of them are more of a wish list of things that they would like to see, but we have not committed any dollars to many of these.
Is there any of them on here that we have committed? Is there, maybe we could get a list of those?
Okay, we can definitely do that. You wanna break it down for each different?
Yeah, for each department that's wanting, please.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, additional questions, council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved parade permit fee waiver for Wallace-Mardi Gras Parade, February the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, reports?
Update on CNG stations in old oil change facility.
Mr. Chairman, last meeting, Mr. Hammond said to ask for an update, excuse me, on the, on the alternative fuel stations. There had been a request some time ago to an appraiser to provide us with written appraisals of those two properties. The appraiser had done most of the work that he needed to do. There was a period of time where we thought that there was a buyer for the two facilities. Then, when it appeared that the buyer was not gonna be viable, we essentially asked the appraiser to pause his operations. But recently, we've, we asked him to complete them, which he has. I just got those late yesterday, and I forwarded them just a few minutes ago to Ms. McGraw to make sure that she shares them with the council. And I'll make sure that the mayor and Ms. Nottingham have a copy as well. Essentially, I think that the, that the plan moving forward will be to go ahead and introduce the appropriate ordinance to have both of those declared surplus, and then a separate ordinance to have them advertised publicly so that we can be in a position to sell them, should we locate a buyer for the two stations. That's the one right here on East Texas and then the one down on Parkdale Boulevard. And I think that the, you know, there's been some talk about contingency plans if we don't find a buyer for them. I think that Mr. Orr from Fleet Services would tell you that at this point, and there's been, there's certainly been some questions from both the mayor and the council on finding a viable buyer for those, which we hope to be able to find one. That's why we started this process back, sometime back in late two thousand and twenty-two. But that's the update, Mr. Hammond. There was a, I just, he was asking where we were in the process, and that's where we are. The other update would be on the Nichols Loop Center property on Benton Road. Mr. Valentine had also done an appraisal previously when the matter was still in litigation. He's updating his appraisal, and he will have that to us very shortly. The appraisal needed to be updated based on some negotiations that we had made with DOTD to make sure that we secured an entrance to that property in the future. But that will be a property that will be declared surplus through the council and then listed, and we'll put that on the open market and hopefully find a buyer for that and get that off of the city's books.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody have any questions?
Questions, council? All right, we need, we have an update on litigation. City of Bojor versus Stephanie.
Update on-
Go ahead.
Update on litigation, the City of Bojor versus Stephanie Ag. Bojor Register of Voters, Bojor Parish, Louisiana, docket one seven one one six four.
Mr. President, as the council's aware, this was an issue that came up last year when the mayor and the council were presented with a petition that was seeking a change to the Bojor City Charter on the issue of term limits. The, a hearing was held last Thursday in Bojor District Court, and rather than go into executive session and provide you with an update, I felt it would just be appropriate to provide an update on, on the status of that since it's been some time since that matter has been addressed. As the council will recall, there was an issue when the petition first came in. It was, it was accompanied by certification from the registrar of voters that identified it as a certified petition. When the petition first came in, the city attorney, Mr. Jacobs, initially had some concerns about various parts of the form and the format of the petition, and asked the council and sought outside legal counsel on the matter from an attorney with the Keen Miller Firm. And both Mr. Jacobs and the outside counsel's opinion was that there were issues with the form and the format itself of the, of the petition, but that there was an issue specifically that had to do with the fact that the petition did not have all of the essential elements of Louisiana law on the issue. And because our charter is silent on the issue of the exact form and what has to be contained in a petition, then Louisiana law controls on the issue. And as the council will recall, Mr. Jacobs asked for the authority to request that the registrar either address the issue and voluntarily rescind her certification as improper or be authorized to move forward with a, with a, essentially what's called a petition for declaratory judgment, which is what was filed in order to put the matter before a district judge and have a district judge make a declaration, if you will, on, on several issues. And the hearing was held this past Thursday in the twenty-six JDC in front of Judge Mike Craig on that issue. And the, the Attorney General, we had also requested that the Attorney General's Office provide an opinion on the matter, but the Attorney General's Office declined to provide an opinion on, on whether the certification was proper pursuant to Louisiana law because of the issue that the Attorney General's Office serves as general counsel to the various registrars around the state. And so the Attorney General's Office, they didn't not provide an opinion. They just declined to provide an opinion because they said that they couldn't as the general counsel for the registrar. But the Attorney General's Office did file a response to the petition that the city filed, asking for a declaration. And that was the hearing that we had last Thursday, and there was an attorney present from the Attorney General's Office. Mr. Colonel Crockett was present, representing the Term Limits Coalition, who was added as an indispensable party in that it's their petition. And essentially, the judge explained that the position of the city was correct, that the, that the petition did not comply with Louisiana law. And I know that the judge, you know, expressed regret, and he explained that and explained to, to everyone there that it's not, you know, it's not his job to, to do anything other than to be the referee and to assess whether, you know, whether the petition itself was flawed. It was, it was important to report that the attorney for the Attorney General's Office actually admitted in his argument that the petition itself was, it had a vice of form, would be the legal term, but basically this fatal flaw was there and that it was flawed from the day that it got the first signature on it. And so essentially, even though the registrar quote-unquote certified twenty-seven hundred some odd signatures, quote-unquote certified twenty-seven hundred some odd signatures, there are really no signatures that were on the petition that were valid because it it did not meet the proper form. And it's unfortunate, the judge explained to Colonel Crockett that unfortunately, that there was a lot of work done, obviously, but that he explained that he was the gatekeeper and that he had to make sure that the statutory requirements were met and explained that 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 petition was not properly certified and that the registrar should not have certified that petition. And that he essentially declared the matter over with and dismissed it. Now, there are still some procedural issues, we've not submitted a judgment yet, and you know, the attorneys and the parties will get together, that's that's common, even though the judge ruled in court, there still has to be, it still has to be rendered in the form of a of a of a written judgment. But I'm just looking back at my notes from the hearing, Judge Craig pointed out that it was, that the petition was void on its face and that they would have to, that it was just not properly formatted. And it, I know that this is an issue that is, to say that there wasn't consensus within the council or between the council and the mayor is an understatement. But I think everyone here and and the mandate that 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 we got from strongly from the council and from the mayor was, whatever we do, we've got to make sure that we get it right. And Judge Craig explained that this was like a situation that he had recently encountered with a marriage license and a marriage certificate that had a, that had a tiny flaw in it, and it was caught. But had it not been caught, these two people that thought they were married were actually not married. And that could go for years, and and I recall Mister Jacob sitting right here and explaining that a flaw of this nature, any law that would have been built on top of that flawed petition would have been flawed forever. And it would have been subject to invalidation forever. It just would have been at the appropriate time or at some point in the future, and it could very well be conceived, we've had some discussions in our Charter Commission meetings where there's some places around the country that have implemented term limits, and then later they have come back and and tried to undo them. The worst thing that we could all do is implement something like this and then twelve years or fifteen years or twenty years down the road, someone files suit to invalidate that law and then have it undone. And and it would not be fair to the to the taxpayers of of Bossier City now or in the future, when these problems would just be more and more expensive. And so essentially, that issue with the first petition is now over with. At least from the city's perspective, so that's, that's, that's the update.
Alright, council, any other questions? Alright, announcements, mayor?
Well, thank you, Mister President, I would say happy Mardi Gras. I hope everybody had fun during the Mardi Gras events and stuff, even though the weather was bad. The weather's not gonna be bad today, they're they're gonna have their last parade around the Bossier Mall tonight for the children's parade. And that happens, I think it starts at six o'clock, and that's gonna be a lot of kids out there, and it's pretty good to come out there in good weather. Everybody knows that we broke the ground on Chasing Aces last Friday, there was a bunch of people out there, a lot of excited people. That's gonna be anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-five million dollar project out there, and it's gonna bring a lot of people to Bossier City and give a lot of entertainment to people. The fire department will have a graduation class tomorrow at ten o'clock at the Sheriff's Substation. And we have a great group of guys that are graduating with us this this time. They ran from the Training Center to the City Hall this morning, seven miles without stopping. They did, they did it like the nine mile, nine-minute miles, and they were, they did great, I mean, they're all, they stopped, they weren't even breathing hard, and I feel kinda bad about that.
The chiefs are gonna run with them?
I think he rode in the car beside them.
Come on, Brad, you can do it.
So that was called the unity run, so they go, go at the one at the last. And the graduation is tomorrow. Other than that, everything's going well in Bossier City. I want to thank the council, working together, getting things done, I appreciate you guys.
Counsel, any announcements? Being adjourned.